All right, I'm going to call this regular City Commission meeting of Monday, June 16th. The order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) ...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, we begin by acknowledging that the land on which we gather is the territory of the Ottawa and Chipewa peoples who have steward of this land through the generations. Thank you for your strength and resilience in protecting this land and inspiring us to uphold our responsibilities to do the same. Before I start with the agenda, I just wanted to take a moment, as people might have seen, we had a very large demonstration of democracy and free speech this weekend, and I want to thank all the citizens who engaged and shared their thoughts and came together communally to be a community, and I want to thank the organizers for putting on such a good event where everybody could feel safe and respected, and our officers, our police department, who worked, I know closely with them to make sure that that's how it would go, and I want to thank the community for giving people either participating and/or giving the space to do what they can do here in America, which is demonstrate their First Amendment rights. So I just wanted to start off by acknowledging that gathering this weekend and thank everyone who participated, and thank everyone for exercising their rights as an American and this democracy that we have for now. So with that, I will now hand it over to Benjamin for the roll call.
Yes, good evening, Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Shaw.
Here.
Commissioner Stanley.
Here.
Commissioner Treadwell.
Here.
Commissioner Warner.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson.
Here.
And Mayor Shamro.
Here.
All right, and moving on to announcements from the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Shamro, I have two announcements. MDOT has announced that the traffic shift on Grandview Parkway will occur later this week as they complete the paving on the bayside of the project. So once those lines are painted and traffic shifts, the trail on the bayside will also be open to pedestrian and bicycle traffic. As construction season ramps up, a reminder to the public that the city has a Streets and Sidewalk closures webpage with an interactive map, and the link can be found on the projects page on the city's website. Thanks.
Great, announcement from the City Clerk, please.
Yes, I have meetings to announce for this week, the week of June 16th, 2025. The City Commission Ad-Hoc Committee on the Ethics Policy will meet Tuesday, June 17th, it'll be at noon, in the second floor conference room. The Planning Commission will hold a special meeting on Tuesday, June 17th, it'll be at 6:00 PM in the Commission Chambers. The Brown Bridge Trust Fund Ad-Hoc Committee is meeting on Wednesday, June 18th, at 10:00 AM in the Training Room on the second floor of the Governmental Center. The Arts Commission is also meeting on Wednesday, June 18th, at 3:30 PM in the Committee Room, which is on the second floor of the Governmental Center. The Brown Bridge Advisory Committee is meeting on Thursday, June 19th, at 5:00 PM at Brown Bridge Quiet Area at Buck's Landing specifically, and the DDA Board will be meeting on Friday, June 20th, at 9:00 AM in this room. And we do have a few different boards that we're currently recruiting for, and they include opportunities on the Downtown Development Authority Board, Local Officers Compensation Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, and Brown Bridge Advisory Committee, and as always, we encourage folks who are interested in serving to contact the City Clerk's office to chat about it and also to submit your application. And then we also have packets, paperwork to run for City Commission. Those are available for pickup in the City Clerk's office. And lastly, just my usual reminder to please speak into the microphone so folks can easily hear you. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that, and we get to start out today with probably one of my favorite days at the meetings, both as Commissioner and now as Mayor, which is our Human Rights Commission Awards, and so I'm going to have Jen Loop, who's the Chair, meet me up at the podium, and we'll start, she's got all the important plaques. So I'm just going to say a couple of words to get us started here. We just had the actual celebration before this, and it was wonderful, a lot more opportunities for speeches, but we are going to have some of the recipients share some words here, and I'm just really inspired and humbled by the organizations and our honoree this year. I kind of half joked that it's both really wonderful and also slightly funny that we're honoring the Grand Travers Band as an organization, as a large employer, because we are honoring the people who came first, and that just kind of is appropriate in that we are acknowledging that, and the work that's being done both as an employer and as a giver in this community, but also a little funny because we're sitting on their land and giving them an award for us being here. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. But I also, you know, the Michigan, I learned this, that the Michigan Indian Legal Services Fund or group is here, it's been 50 years here in Traverse City and doing such important work, and I think that's why this award is also really important, is acknowledging organizations like that that have been doing the work for 50 years. We honored GTI last year, I think all these groups doing the quiet work here that's so important and makes our community the strong place it is as we demonstrated this weekend. And then, of course, Holly Bird, Holly Ba, as I learned to say today because she has passed. You know, we're honoring her unfortunately, posthumously, I think this has been a real reminder for a lot of us of the people doing really good work in our community, and we might not always have the time with them that we hope, or maybe wish we had, I would say that we deserve, but we've got the time with her that I think we deserve, and there's been a lot of things spoken about that at a lot of memorials about the power she's going to do in her next journey. And so I just wanted to share, I was thinking a lot about this over the last couple of weeks as she's been honored at a couple of awards, and memorial service of the Edna St. Vincent Millay quote, "My candle it burns at both ends, it will not last the night, but ah my foes and oh my friends, it leaves such a lovely light." So I just wanted to really share that today because it's been on my mind, and hearing all of the great speeches from everybody, we're only going to hear from one person today, but lots of people sharing their thoughts on Holly Ba, and I'm sure there'll be a lot more opportunities, and I hear a very lovely party coming up at Labor Day next year after the proper time, so we can all look for that. But in the meantime, I will hand the mic over to Jen Loop, who is our Human Rights Commission Chairperson, to give out the awards, and we'll have our photo ops and allow everybody to say a couple of things as they're called up, so we're looking forward to that.
Thank you, Mayor Shamro. You really summed it up nicely. This year, we are honoring two organizations. This organizational award has been given out by the Human Rights Commission for the last three years. We have two categories, for employers or organizations that are under 30 employees and then 30 and over, so we have two recipients for that today, and then also the Sarah Hardy Award. I also want to say thank you to the commissioners and to the city that we have a space where we recognize people doing good works. It speaks a lot to what we care about, so thank you all. So should we just start with, okay. So for our organization with under 30 employees, we are recognizing Michigan Indian Legal Services. (applause) And if you'd like to say?
(inaudible). Oh, yes. (laughter) I'm sorry if this is a little bit of a repeat for some of you. But I'm very honored to accept this award on behalf of Michigan Indian Legal Services. We are a statewide provider of free legal assistance for those who live in poverty with tribal and federal Indian law issues, and as has been mentioned, this is our 50th anniversary, and for all 50 years since 1975, our home has been right here in Traverse City. It's actually in our bylaws that we have to stay in Traverse City. Was that way since we were created down at Ranch Rudolph. So I struggled a little bit with creating this speech, not only because I'm not much of a public speaker, but also when talking about human rights, it's kind of hard to not sound political these days, but I'm going to try. So at its core, humanitarian work is about empathy and action, collective action. It's about recognizing our shared humanity and stepping up to help those in need. I am blessed to be able to witness the tireless dedication of my staff and other individuals and organizations working to make a difference in the lives of others every day. And my list's work is primarily funded through grants and contracts, and about two-thirds of our budget, annual budget, comes from federal grants and subgrants. So these are very challenging times for us, and it's in others in the nonprofit sector, and it's not just about the cutting of the federal budget, but it's also about the uncertainty. It is very hard to plan for what services you're going to be providing over the next several years when you don't know where the funds to pay your staff are going to come from. So on that note, I'd like to thank the Human Rights Commission and the City Commission for acknowledging, you know, the work that we've done, and importantly, shining a light on the critical importance of public service efforts. I'd also like to ask those of you here to think about donating your time and talents and funds to your local nonprofits and national nonprofits, because we're all kind of going through the same thing right now. And if you don't have a nonprofit in mind, the Grand Travers Regional Community Foundation is a wonderful organization that pools the donations and puts them back into the local community, because even the smallest kindness can create rippling effects of positive change. Thank you very much.[622.41][622.41](applause)
And for our organizational award for a group of 30 or more employees, I'd like to call up Chairwoman Witherspoon from the Grand Travers Band of Ottawa and Chipewa Indians.
Chi Mi Guetch, Sha'wane Ademokondishnekaz, Ma'kwa Doudayem. My name is Sandra Witherspoon, and I have the honor of being the Chairwoman of the Grand Travers Band. I'm truly privileged to be here tonight to accept the Traverse City Human Rights Commission Award on behalf of the Grand Travers Band. This award is more than a recognition, it is a reflection of our shared values, human rights, inclusivity, and service to the community. These principles are at the heart of everything we do. We remain guided by the principle that true sovereignty means not only standing up for our rights, but also lifting those up in need, yeah, those in need, lifting them up. Whether it's through our elders forums, housing initiatives, cultural preservation, we are building a community where every member is valued, heard, and supported. Chi Mi Guetch, thank you for recognizing our shared work and for walking alongside us as we continue to serve with strength, compassion, and commitment. We believe that when one community rises, we all rise together. So Chi Mi Guetch to the Human Rights Commission and all who made this evening possible, and Chi Mi Guetch to everyone of you for being here and supporting the work we do. Your recognition means more than we can express, and it strengthens our resolve to continue building a better future for all.
And then I'd like to welcome up family members, whoever is wanting to or coming up to accept the Sarah Hardy Award on behalf of Holly Ba, Holly Bird.
Okay, I don't have much of a speech. Gwampanje Indishnekaz, Nimki Nenodum Traverse City, Nenodum Jaba.
Nimki Ma'kwa Kwe Indishnekaz. We are Holly Ba's children, and we are so thankful to be accepting this award on behalf of our family.
It's truly an incredible thing. You know, as far as I can remember, since, you know, as far as I can remember as a child, you know, my mom, Holly Ba, took us all over to, you know, stay active and protest and really fight for the rights of, you know, humanitarian rights, all sorts of ways, all sorts of people. I mean, she's worked with so many, you know, I guess, for lack of better words, like groups of people, including E3, Title Track, Michigan Indian Legal Services, and it was a huge part of her work. She had, you know, all sorts of different work that she did, you know, whether it was environmental, water, but one of her main focuses was humanitarian work, and, you know, it's, we feel truly honored to be accepting this. I know that if she was here, she'd be overwhelmed with joy, she'd be jumping up and down, especially with a lot of the people she knows here. See Mark Wilson over in the corner.[854.43][854.43](laughter) But, you know, just to have this represent her means a lot to us. It's something that she fought for forever, you know, before she was in law school, before, you know, she became a big name in this community. Humanitarian work is where her heart was, so again, thank you, and go on.[880.12][880.12](applause)
Thanks again, and thanks for all the nominations, and every year, we're looking for nominations for this, but there's always great, great people to recognize in the community, so thank you.[901.12][901.12](applause)
And before we get going, I just wanted to say that it was mentioned, and I feel rightfully so based on the feelings out there sometimes, that human rights, talking about human rights feels like it's political, but we have a Human Rights Commission in Traverse City that's here every year, year in and year out for a reason, and that's because human rights are rights, they're something that we stand for, they're not political, they're basic, fundamental parts of being alive on this earth. So I appreciate the sentiment and how that can be thought of now, but, you know, I think certainly, especially in our city, that is how I think we all view things and how we like to proceed, so we will continue to have the Human Rights Commission exist, and with that, we also have an open seat, so if anybody wants to apply for it, please feel free, we've got interviews coming up in a couple of weeks here. So with that, I will now hand it back over to you, Benjamin, to do the consent calendar.
Yes, the purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping nine controversial items together to be dealt with by one Commission motion without discussion. Any member of the Commission's staff or the public can ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed from the agenda, or removed from the consent calendar and placed elsewhere on the agenda for individual consideration by the Commission, and such requests are automatically respected. If an item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single Commission action adopting the consent calendar. Item one, consideration of approving the minutes of the June 2nd and June 9, 2025 meetings of the City Commission, approval recommended. Item two, consideration of authorizing an amendment to the lease agreement with the Grand Travers Area Rock and Mineral Club for its lease of city-owned space in the Carnegie Building at 322 Sixth Street, which would extend the term of the lease through October 31st, 2026, approval recommended. Item three, consideration of authorizing an amendment to the construction agreement and authorizing an amendment to the consultant agreement for construction engineering services related to the galvanized water services replacement project, approval recommended. Item four, consideration of authorizing an amendment to the agreement for resource management services at the Brown Bridge Quiet Area to extend it for a period of one year, approval recommended. Item five, consideration of authorizing an annual amendment to the contract for the maintenance, operation, and management of the wastewater treatment plant and associated sewer pump stations, which formally outlines the cost for the period of July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026, as it relates to the previously authorized 10-year agreement, approval recommended. Item six, consideration of authorizing a purchase order for diesel fuel for city fleet use, approval recommended. Item seven, consideration of approving the comprehensive liability and property insurance program as recommended by the City Clerk for fiscal year 2025, 2026, and approving the associated payments, approval recommended. Item eight, consideration of waiving the competitive bidding process and authorizing a purchase order for a pole-mounted traffic signal cabinet, approval recommended. Item nine, consideration of authorizing up to $200,000 as a local match for the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant for preparation of a safety action plan and implementation of safety demonstration projects, approval recommended. Item 10, consideration of declaring unclaimed property held by the Police Department a surplus so it may be auctioned for sale, approval recommended. Item 11, consideration of approving budget amendments as recommended by the City Treasurer or Finance Director for fiscal year 2024, 2025, approval recommended. Item 12, consideration of adopting a resolution requesting assistance from the Michigan Municipal League Legal Defense Fund to provide an amicus brief in support of the city's application for leave to the Michigan Supreme Court in connection with a Michigan tax tribunal matter, adoption recommended. And finally, item 13, consideration of authorizing an amendment to the agreement for legal services in connection with labor matters to increase the not-to-exceed amount by $25,000 for a total not-to-exceed amount of $50,000, approval recommended.
Thank you. Is there any commissioners that'd like an item removed from the consent calendar? Tim?
Item number nine, please.
And Heather?
12.
Okay.
I've got a question on two.
Is it a quick, relevant question? Okay.
If I can go?
Yeah, go.
Just a matter of, I don't know if this process or legal, do we have to say who the president of the organization is in the lease terms, or?
No.
Because, I mean, I can understand with a precedent change, we need to change the name, but if we just strike the line entirely, then we avoid the problem in future terms.
Okay, good suggestion, but not pulling it, so okay, thank you. Would, anything else from the commissioners? Would anybody from the public like an item pulled that is not nine or 12? Okay, seeing I'll bring back the commission for a motion. Consent calendar as amended?
Yes, I move that we accept the consent calendar as presented.
Nope.
Sorry.
Yep. Okay, Treadwell and then Wilson, was it? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, item number nine, Tim, you had this pulled.
Yeah, just essentially an overall question, is this really worth it? And the starting question, because it says up to $200,000, how much do we truly anticipate should we get this award, like how much are we asking for, and what might we be obligated to spend?
I'd like to welcome Anne Pagano, the City Engineer, to answer these questions. Anne has been working on this grant alongside of city staff as well as Assistant City Manager Deb Allen.
Thank you, Liz, Anne Pagano, City Engineer. So this is Safe Streets for All Grant. It's basically a two-phase process for these grants. The first phase is this action plan. Once we have the action plan in place, we would be eligible for implementation grants, which were for up to $25 million, so we're hoping that this could be the way to do some larger projects in the city, including possibly Seventh Street and 14th Street that we've been talking about. We don't know exactly how much we're going to need for the action plan yet, because we don't have a proposal from a consultant that will come in the future, so we just are, the grant is for up to $1 million, so there's no way it would be more than that, so 20% match would be 200,000. This won't happen for at least another year, so we'd be coming back to the Commission for your approval for a contract to move forward with it. This is just an obligation so that we can have a resolution in the application for the action plan so that it's clear that we are, you know, agree to move forward with this if we do get the grant.
Okay, thank you. And then just, I guess, for the public then, like why I'm concerned about this, as was stated, there are two phases, the other way to look at it, having read through the material, there's two different grants that can be applied for, the Planning and Demonstration Grant or the Implementation Grant. And so what's being proposed is that we apply for the Planning and Administration Grant, and so really, it is planning, so it's another plan, and we get pilloried quite frequently for paying money to develop another plan, and even the demonstration portion of this grant, it has to be very, it's very clear that it has to be temporary and items that are removed, and it's really part of trying to figure out what works. So if we put in a temporary crosswalk someplace, it has to be removed, but we would be studying that as a city to say, hey, did it work? And then that potentially gets written into an implement, at first, it gets written into the planning, sorry, into the plan, and then should the city decide to move forward with an implementation grant, that's a whole separate step. This is a multi-year process. We do have a mobility action plan, we have a strategic plan, and we're working on a Complete Streets policy, and so to me, this begs the question, like, to what end? Like, we might spend $200,000, and it's largely the way things are written for accidents involving automobiles. So for $200,000, could we just spend that money and do the work ourselves, or does it truly make sense to develop another plan? And then the risk of going after an implementation grant that we might not get. So that's where I'm at with it and why I hesitate to support it. I understand that it's potentially a nice pot of money for doing work, and then I guess a final comment is, in the documentation, it shares that all streets and roads in the jurisdiction have to be part of the plan, and so what I believe we'll find, which everybody probably understands, is that most of the crash data will be from not city streets, but from state highways that go through our community, and so we'll find out that many of the accidents and crashes are on those highways, and that'll be part of the plan, but then we have no actual rights to tell MDOT what to do with their traffic signals. We can ask them, but again, part of my hesitation to support this, thanks.
Do we have other questions or a motion? Go ahead, Jackie.
I had a couple of questions, one about timing and one about source of funding. Was there an application deadline mentioned of this coming June 26th? Could you tell us about that, because we're 10 days away?
Unfortunately, this is oftentimes the reality with some of these grants. We don't often find out exactly when they're going to be open. This actually is part of the IRA Inflation Reduction Act grants that we had contracted with LSI to inform us about, so this is actually one of those grants. We decided that it would make more sense financially to go with Wade Trim completing the grant application than LSI, because we would, in essence, need to use both of them, and it would be twice the dollars, and Wade Trim has great experience with applying for these grants. So the timeline is tight on these, we deal with it with all of the federal grants, so that is a reality, we have been working on it, identifying it, and we're ready, I think, to move forward with that. And the second part of your question, I believe...
Had to do with sources of funding. I saw the Inflation Reduction Act and federal grant, and I winced, and I wanted to hear more about whether there's any anticipated, what the anticipated risk is of that funding source right now.
Everything that we're hearing is the Department of Transportation grants have been going forward, Department of Energy, NOAA grants, we have not had success with those, they've been canceled right about the time when we found out we were eligible, so this is a reality, but we're encouraged to continue, because if you don't apply, then what happens is the federal government determines that, well, there wasn't much interest, and so the dollars could go away. But I think the key thing to remember with this particular grant is by having a community action plan, what this does is makes us eligible for funding in the future. Without it, we are not eligible simply, that's just the reality of it.
I'd like to ask a really quick question, since you asked Commissioner Warner, but I do see your hands, I will note that. I wanted to ask either Anne or Deb, you know, this has been something identified that we paid to have someone find from the IRA money and exploring that funding specifically, and so, you know, it's been pointed out that this is another plan, although I would argue that people, nobody likes to pillory us more than us for not using the plans that we actually have been using. Now, have we done the whole Saul grant, for example? No, because we don't have $17 million laying around, but I think that we've had a lot of conversations with a lot of the plans that we've done since I've been elected at least, and funding has been a determinant, and so I'm going to push back a little on that one, because I'm curious, my question is, the work we have done with Mobility Plan, the work that you would normally do for some of these projects, does this add a really large, big layer or a lot more work, or is this kind of a, got to check the box to get the money, and a lot of this is what we already have, we just have to toss it around a little so it looks better for one group versus another?
I reviewed an example, Safety Action Plan, and it is different than the Mobility Action Plan, it looks at crash data like we talked about, and it looks at, you know, intersection improvements, signal improvements, that sort of thing, so I think it's a little step further maybe than Mobility Action Plan, which focused more on multimodal, but this would be multimodal and vehicle improvements.
And is it a major addition to what we normally do for some of these projects, or when viewing some of these projects, or is it, I guess that's asking a little bit to Commissioner Warner's point, is this something that we're just kind of rearranging everything to chase some money that we may or may not get, or is it a layer that we've added, but it's ultimately not burdensome compared to the reward we might get for it?
I think what you're asking is, I think it would be valuable whether we use it to get future funds, you know, in the future or not, but it would, again, be very valuable potentially to get these large sums of grant funding in the future.
So you say it is worthwhile both ways, but especially because we could get money? Great.
Yeah.
Thank you. No, Tim, sorry, thank you.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with what's been said, and I see it as, I guess, in a good light, complimentary to the Complete Streets and Mobility Action Plan, because this, to me, is more focused on motor vehicles. At the end of the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan overview, they put in that the grant program is guided by the refocus of transportation system design and operation on anticipating human mistakes and lessening impact forces to reduce crash severity and save lives. on anticipating human mistakes and lessening impact forces to reduce crash severity and save lives. So that's, to me, sounds like, let's put up more barriers, like we were proposing at the west end of town there. And maybe doesn't apply so much to Seventh Street. Maybe on Fourteenth Street here and there, but I won't read it. But at other places in the documentation, it talks about downgrading applications that restrict the flow of motor vehicles in any way. That was a change passed by Congress just in March. So somewhat contrary to where things have been headed as far as traffic calming in our community. So again, just, yes, there might be possibilities there, but I don't see this as the golden goose that will actually help with on-the-ground costs that we will incur with Seventh and Fourteenth Streets.
Do we, thank you, Tim. Do we have any other questions or a motion? Okay, then I guess we're moving on. All right, so moving on to item number 12 then. And, sorry Heather, you had this?
Oh yeah, that's me. Let's see, where am I here? Okay, so this is about rather dense executive summary that we got, that if you didn't know what you were looking at, you probably wouldn't understand it. And I apologize, I did find, I, I accused Lauren of not attaching a bunch of tax tribunal documents, and I did find a few of them from 2024. So they were there, and they are, they are definitely like watching paint dry. But I actually really like watching legal paint dry. And we have a lot of information up here, sitting up here. This case, we have a lot of information, all of us sitting here. And no, I'm not an attorney, and I'm not an engineer, and I'm not an accountant. But I, I feel like my job is to read the stuff that I have, and to do some research, and to ask questions, and to have an opinion. And like I said, we have, we have information going back to 2016 on this particular case in number 12 there. And it seems to me that it's true, the tax tribunal messed up on this one. And that is exactly what the appeals court indicated. Appeals court did not, in fact, exempt future years per se. It remanded the case and clarified how the burden of proof must be applied moving forward. An appeal to the Supreme Court, which is what is being asked for in this item, where reversal seems very unlikely, could further undermine, I think, public trust and waste public resources. I think as, you know, not an attorney, and not an engineer, and not a, an accountant, but a commissioner who read everything twice and did my research, I, I feel that we should just comply with the appellate ruling and present full evidentiary record before the tax tribunal, like the appeals court asked us to. And if the property is indeed taxable, then the city will prevail. And so I don't support going forward with this one.
Go ahead, Lauren.
I just want to clarify what's being asked for. This is on appeal to the Supreme Court currently, and the request is to ask for the Michigan Municipal League Legal Defense Fund to submit an amicus brief in support of the city's position that the property is taxable, and that the burden of proof is on the person that is requesting a tax-exempt status, which would be the petitioner in this case, not the city, that they have to show that they're tax-exempt. That's the issue in this case. The city prevailed before the tax tribunal, and the, the Court of Appeals overturned it. The reason that it's important to appeal to the Supreme Court in this case is that, number one, there are many of such properties at the airport, and they could all end up using this if, if the Court of Appeals decision stands to argue that they are exempt, and they don't have to provide any proof to prove that they're exempt. Instead, the city has the burden of proof to show that they're not exempt, and that's very problematic for the city. It's also very problematic, because this is a published opinion of the Court of Appeals. And so it is a matter of statewide concern for all municipalities that have to deal with that. And that's the reason why the Michigan Municipal League does submit amicus briefs to, in these situations, to argue on behalf of the wider issue on a statewide basis. And so that's what's being asked, is whether or not to ask MML to file a brief, and they require the, a city commission to make that request. So that is what is before the city commission.
The case is already going to the
Yes.
Supreme Court, no matter what. Mitch?
Yeah.
And then I see you, Jackie.
As was just pointed out, this case might have originated within the city of Traverse City, but it's not a unique situation. There are many, many other municipalities and local units of government that operate airports or similar facilities and could find themselves in a similar tax issue. The fact that there is a difference between the lower appeal, I mean, the lower ruling and the appeals court ruling, yes, the appeals court does supersede it, but it points to me that there is perhaps some fundamental disagreement that will be resolved by either the Supreme Court taking this up or not. And that, either way, that decision will have impacts that don't just affect this property, don't just affect Traverse City, but could impact communities across the whole state. With that, I support it.
Well, okay, first of all, Jackie had her hand up, but I'll let you, whatever, you had your hand up first, so whatever you want to say. But we have, we do not have a motion, so after Jackie, there's either questions or a motion, please, so go ahead, Jackie.
Thank you. Could we please hear some more about the reasoning of the Court of Appeals in overturning the favorable to Traverse City Tax Tribunal decision? And what insights can you share with us? What are your expectations in, in terms of a Supreme Court appeal of the Court of Appeals decision?
The, the Court of Appeals flipped the burden of proof on its head in this case. It's well-established that when you are alleging that you are exempt, the, the, the status quo is all properties are taxable. And if you're asking for an exemption, you are an exception to the rule, and you have the burden of proof to, to show why. And the Court of Appeals flipped that on its head, and that's problematic, because the city can't know exactly what was going on in that property. We tried to find that out in discovery, and we had a really hard time getting that information from the taxpayer in that instance. So it's very problematic to have the burden of proof on the city to prove a negative in that instance. That's why taxation is the default under tax law. And so that's why it's important, and that is why, those are the cases that this, the Michigan Supreme Court is meant to take. It's cases that have a statewide impact. It's not just, it's not a court of correction. It doesn't take cases just because there was a mistake in one instance, unless that can be a problem for a statewide problem, and that's what this is. So the hope is that this, the, the Supreme Court would, would recognize that and, and understand that it's not correct to have a burden of proof that is flipped to what it, what it, what it always is, is, which is that taxation is the default.
Yeah, I ask a follow-up. Did the Court of Appeals acknowledge that inconsistency? Did they address it in any way in their findings? What, what did we learn other, other than, in our opinion, they weren't following proper law and precedent? Did they, did they have a statement on the issue?
Well, I mean, it's a, it's a lengthy opinion, but it's, you know, I've analyzed it as well as our tax tribunal outside counsel. And we do believe that it is a reversible error and that it is not correct in its reasoning. And so, I mean, in every, in every case, there's an, there can be an honest difference of opinion, of course. And we, we firmly believe that this was the wrong outcome, and that's why we're recommending, and we've appealed to the Supreme Court. And, and we believe that it is valuable to have MML weigh in on behalf of the statewide issue, on behalf of municipalities. And that's why we've requested to have, to have that request made to LDF.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
Just a quick question.
Okay, question, yes.
Approximately when, just by month, did we as a city file application to appeal with the Supreme Court?
It was within the last six weeks, I want to say.
That, that's, yeah, just curious, thank you.
Would anybody like to make a motion? Go ahead, Mark.
I'd like to make the motion that the resolution request in aid be adopted.
Support.
Okay, Wilson, and I'll give that to Stanley. Okay, so now, although we've kind of ventured into that, questions or other comments? Go ahead, Heather.
Just to clarify, if the, if the, if you take, okay, if it goes to the Supreme Court, they take it up, the amicus brief is filed, the Supreme Court decides that, in fact, the appeals court was incorrect, and that the burden of proof is on the, the person seeking the exemption. It's going to go back into the appeals court then?
No, the, the, the hearing on the merits of this has already taken place, and the Court of Appeals ordered it to go back for, not for a new hearing, not for a new hearing. There would be no proofs before the tribunal anymore. It would go back, and it would be an enter order just simply reversing what the, what the tribunal's order had been. If the Supreme Court were to take it up and reverse the Court of Appeals, it would enter an order reversing the Court of Appeals, or possibly remanding for an order entered reversing that. There's, it, it's not that you get a new hearing.
And what happens if the Supreme Court doesn't take up the case?
Then we accept the decision and move forward, because that's the end of the line. Yep.
Go ahead, Jackie.
I think Commissioner Shaw brought up the issue of reputational risk. Do you, do you see reputational risk to the city in pursuing this? Well, it, it sounds like we've already made the decision to pursue it to the Supreme Court. But presuming that they accept it, are there, is there reputational risk to the city of, of a loss on that decision? Or is it pretty much the same as having lost with the Court of Appeals?
I think it's the same, and I think that it's, it's important for the city to protect the ability to tax properties that, you know, like I said, the default is taxation. And it's important for the city, for obvious reasons, to protect that default. Because otherwise, you know, the city could spend all of its time trying to prove the opposite, right? That, that, that nobody is exempt from taxation, that's where we'd be starting out. Instead of starting from a place of, you know, the default is that everybody, all properties are taxable. So I'm sure you can see that that would place an extreme burden on the city from the outset, and that's why the burden of proof is the way that it is, as the default is taxable.
And bringing it back to the actual, what's being requested here, which is the, I always say amicus, and I'm saying it wrong, I know. Amicus brief, sorry, I just remembered.
I heard it said every way.
Okay, perfect, thanks. This is about that, going to that, so to the question of reputation, the fact that MML is saying, we're putting this to MML, and we've done this before, and MML, when we go to them, tends to usually, when we go to them, because Lauren is very judicious about when we go to them for support, has usually joined us in support. So as far as reputation, this is actually having MML, so the organization that represents cities and smaller municipalities behind us as we move forward, versus us going alone, Lone Ranger style, on something that we think has a larger implication, and that we think that probably other municipalities would agree has a larger implication for them, so that Amy Shamro doesn't go and say, my property is tax-exempt now, prove that I'm not a tax-exempt church or nonprofit in my space. So I think that that's where this particular, the merits of the, the appeal will be, or the Supreme Court case would be decided by the Supreme Court. This is just about the brief and whether we want to ask MML. Everything else is already moving ahead. So it's a question to, but to me, when I've, we've weighed in on these in the past, to Jackie, to your point, is I think it actually hurts our reputation if we don't try to get MML on our side. Any other questions or thoughts? Okay, I'll open it up then, any public comment on this item?
I'll state the rules for public comment for the evening. Please, if you're willing, indicate your name and address, if you're a city resident, non-city resident, or a city business owner. We have a three-minute time allotment, when your time is elapsed, the timer will beep, and we ask that all language be respectful to everyone. Thank you.
Fred Bimber, 1223 Randolph Street, city resident. I hadn't expected to comment on anything tonight, but I am an attorney. I've reviewed the agenda packet materials on this issue, and I strongly urge all city commissioners to support this proposal. If the procedural status of this is accurately represented in the materials, which I think it is, you're applying for leave to, to appeal to the Supreme Court. A very small minority of cases are granted leave to appeal. You will greatly enhance the city's possibility of being heard by the Michigan Supreme Court if you have an amicus brief from the Michigan Municipal League. The issue as described is one that should be of interest to the Michigan Municipal League, and it should be of interest to the city and all city taxpayers. I urge you to ask the Michigan Municipal League to file an amicus brief. They're big people, they can understand the issues, they can decide what they want to do, and I think they will file an amicus brief. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw?
No.
Commissioner Stanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Treadwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Warner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson?
Yes.
And Mayor Shamro?
Yes. Motion passes, right?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I lost count for a second. All right, moving on to old business, for consideration of approving the memorandum of agreement for Fish Pass, and I'll let you kick that off, Liz.
Thank you, Mayor Shamro. Yep, in front of you is the memorandum of agreement for a 10-year post-construction maintenance agreement, and it outlines the responsibilities of operation. We have Frank DeTuri, our Department of Public Services Director, here with us tonight, if you have any questions, as well as Leah McCollum, the Public Affairs Specialist with the Great Lakes Fisheries Commission. So I just would like to open it up to questions if you have any at this time.
Do we have any questions? Go ahead, Heather.
I would like to suggest that we plan early for the, the, the end of this 10-year MOU, and we get a, a kind of standing renewal committee set up that can look, can evaluate about how, how to negotiate a new MOU based on outcomes over the next 10 years. And, you know, after 10 years, it's very possible that the, the technologies have worked and everything's okay, and they can just pick up the stuff that they need to and leave, and we've got that building sitting there. Or it's possible that we want to continue going on, trying to get the, the GLFC to continue their work there. So that, that is my, it's not actually a question, it's, it's a, it's a recommendation that we, you know, 10 years can go by quickly, and perhaps Frank DeTuri and his upcoming retirement would be interested in having something to do with this, this committee to look at the Fish Pass in, in 10 years. Over the next 10 years, for the next 10 years.
Do we have other questions or a motion? Go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, a quick question, and maybe somebody out there can address it, because we've been asked by the public as well, but I'm curious. So I'll ask, is, well, there's 10 years, 20, 30. The channel that will be constructed for the experimentation, what, does that stay like a dam stays? Does that stay for 100 years, even if it's not in use, or if it is found not to be in use in some number of decades? Like, has there been discussion about, it may be only the upper half of it is needed for whatever technology is being used? Does the lower half, is it too cost prohibitive to remove the lower half? Or, and does it, does it just stay there? You know, what, what do future generations expect to see?
True, thanks. Frank DeTuri, Director of Public Services for the city of Traverse City. Liz, also, Dan Zalinski is here from Great Lakes Fisheries Commission, he can help. Liz, also, Dan Zelensky is here from Great Lakes Fisheries Commission, he can help answer those questions. The answer is, we don't know the answers quite to that yet, because depending on, depending on how the iterations of, of the project moves forward, will determine what the end goal might be, and when it is. But all through the process, we've discussed how the, let's say there, there was, there was, the issue happened to be solved within the first 10 years, and it was solved by something that was reproducible and placeable, then we could, whatever that, whatever that solution was, could be melded into the, the final iteration of what the site will look like. And I, I think I'll let Dan expand on a little bit more, but it's, again, I think the answer is, we don't quite know yet. Dan, you want to?
Well, and Dan, by the way, I wanted to introduce you as the lead engineer and scientist with the Great Lakes Fisheries. You were hiding back there, I didn't see you. Thank you, welcome for, thank you for being here.
Yep, thank you. So that's a, a great question, one that we have considered. In the time that we had in between when the project was originally let for construction to where we are now, we had time to kind of think about those conditions, and as, as part of this O&amp;M plan, we have, you know, estimates on what the annual operation costs, and, and we've also had, developed an asset management plan that builds into the commission's accounting and budgeting, potential replacement, repair costs. And with that, we have planned to use some of those funds, that when we get to that 10-year phase, if there is a, a modification to the channel that's required to leave it as a fully functional selective fishway, if there's no, a commitment to not continue the research there, it can modify those channels to be something of a more traditional fishway, or removal of the fishway. And we have some preliminary engineering costs on what that would be, so we have planned for those. Hopefully, that's not the ultimate end goal, but that is something that we have considered and, and have some planning for. Thank you.
Any other questions or a motion? Go ahead, Jackie.
I have several questions. Would you like to wait for a motion before I dive into these?
Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the memorandum of agreement for the operation and maintenance of Fish Pass, such agreement subject as to its substance by the city manager and its form by the city attorney.
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Stanley and Treadwell, and go ahead, Jack, Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you. I, my questions are in three general categories. The first of which is, is the decommissioning question. You know, let's say the research goes very well, and you do finalize the optimum solution for fish passage in both directions, and the scientific portion of the project wraps up, and Fish Pass is decommissioned. I'd like to know what that scenario might look like, if there are options. I'd like to understand the options, and if there, if, if it's, gee, the city owns this, and the, the research is complete, and, and here's the city, and what is our exposure and liability in that situation?
I'm going to have you go one at a time, because I know, just because I know your questions are detailed, to give them a chance to answer and formulate, and then, I've got you for the next two, though, too.
Thank you.
All right. So in, in terms of what it would look like after the 10 years, I can't have a very specific answer, because we haven't done the research yet. So we have plans on, in place in that 10-year period, there's, you know, advancements in different technologies, so we may need, we may find that the optimal solution for the Boardman Otway River is something that only takes up 20 feet of space, and then we have to look at how we would decommission the rest of the length. We may find that we do need the full length, because it does make up a lot, a large portion of the space. It could be formed into something that looks like a naturalized channel with sorting technology spaced throughout. It could have a lot of different final configurations and final looks, so I can't give you a specific answer on what that ends up being. But what I was trying to, to answer to Commissioner Werner's question was that, as part of our, the GLC's operation and maintenance planning, we have those kind of long-term recovery funds that we will have in place, so that if we, when we get to the end of the 10 years, if there's no commitment to continue a new MOA, their funds are available to make modifications. Because this is a dam, the DNR still has requirements for providing fish passage at the site. It may be modified to look like a traditional fishway, or a place for trap and sort hauling. It could have a lot of different shapes, and that is something that we have considered within our own budgeting and planning for the process, but I can't give you a specific answer on what it would look like in 10 years, because we need to find out what happens in the next 10 years.
Sure.
And number two, there we go.
Number two, I'm, I'm interested in the costs to the city of the ownership and maintenance over the 10 years of, of this agreement. I saw a number in there for $27,000 per year. I suspect that that may not be an all-inclusive, when you consider everything from snow removal to landscaping maintenance, to the green roof on the education center, the, the public restrooms in that building. So can we develop a, a bit tighter estimate of what the city's financial exposure is as a result of this MOA?
The number that you see in there was developed with the site assets designed in mind. So the level of service, not quite so much, right? Because we don't know, it doesn't mean that every sidewalk is there as pl- plowed at, at every snow event, does it mean that we, really, what it comes down to is that we, we sat down, we went through all the, all the iterations of the tasks that need to be done, lawn mowing, some of the, some of the snow clearing, some of the long-term and short-term maintenance that have to be on, on the site. So far, or previous years to date, we've had to operate the, the dam structure, to move the gates up and down and exercise them. There'll be a lot less operation pieces. In the past, we've been out on-site 20 to 30 times a year to, to remove debris. Those, those types of maintenance pieces will change, and I think the maintenance plan that we came up with looks at every bit of those, of, of those, the areas that we might have to spend some city dollars on, such, such as, the first, the first year, there are funds in the budget that allow us to understand what that maintenance of the debris on the, on the dam will be. There, the Great Lakes Fisheries Commission, and, and basically the city, will be hiring, or, or, there are funds in there for a contractor to assume that role, because we don't quite understand what that, what, what those numbers are going to be yet. But that'll, that'll give us some more information, so that we'll understand those maintenance, those maintenance needs moving forward. Also, you, you brought up the, the green roof, we're, we're understanding the green roof, it, it's, it'll be taken care of as it's, under its warranty for the first couple, for the first two years by the folks that are installing it. Again, learning what those maintenance items might be. But overall, that, that number that you saw there was our, our best estimate at the amount of in-kind work that the city would have to do to maintain the site.
If I could just make a comment, that when there are so many unknowns, I would be much more comfortable with seeing it bracketed, have a, a most optimistic and a most pessimistic, and, and give us a, a high-low, as well as an expected. I, I would find that very helpful for decision-making. My last question is...
Number three.
...is about timing. This is, this is a big deal. This is a really complicated agreement, about a complicated piece of technology, and I'm wondering, what is the urgency to decide on this tonight? I mean, we're, it, it, the clock starts ticking the day that construction is completed, as I understood it, and that's going to be 2026 for the dam and the research portion, and 2027 for the non-research portions? Can you talk to me about timing?
Yeah. So we, when we originally set out and brought the MOU to this board, and, and the other signatories on here, that was in anticipation of when construction was going to start. And work on the MOA started shortly thereafter, so that we were prepared once construction was in process. And when we met as an advisory board, we had this, and this had representatives from all the signatories, and we discussed what was the proper timing to bring it forward, and it was advised by our board to start pursuing this process now that construction was underway, because really, the only thing that's waiting on this is that we would have a final O&amp;M plan that would include all this, all the documents that we get from the contractors, so like the mate, you know, the recommended maintenance on the green roof is, is an example, that's something that would be appended in there, that we don't know upfront. So that was the, the general thinking of bringing this forward at this time, so that we had ample time for review, and that it was set up and, and prepared for when construction was completed.
And, and so the possibility of, for instance, scheduling, scheduling this for a more in-depth study session would, 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 doesn't sound like it would seriously impede your forward progress? Certainly, it wouldn't affect construction.
No, it, it would not impact construction. I will note that the, the Grand Traverse Band of Chipwato Indians did review this, and they've already signed it. It, our other partners in the DNR is also prepared as well to approve, so it would be nice to be able to keep things moving along.
Do we have other questions or comments? Go ahead, Mitch.
Yes, I, I like to say that looking forward at maintenance is good, which is what we're trying to do, but we will never be able to answer all the questions, certainly not what questions could come up down the road about maintenance. And I'd say it's fundamentally premature to set conditions about how we should plan for future maintenance and other operational expenses, for what is very likely to be beyond, certainly beyond our current terms, and what could be beyond the time that any of the seven of us are serving on this board. In 10 years, I hope that the City of Traverse City still has Parks Department, but it could be that some of the landscaping maintenance had been turned over to a private contractor. Alternately, trash collection is currently handled by a private contractor in our downtown and certain parks, including what will be Fish Pass. That could be brought in-house and done by city crews at some point in the future. We don't know these things, and we shouldn't make determinations based on the expectation that the way things are now is the way they will be 10 years down the road, much less 20 years down the road, when it comes to the granular items like that. And yes, there is the issue of what is going to happen with this, with the research facility after the 10-year period has ended, but one, that's far down the road, and two, we don't know what will happen. A better question for the city concerning city-owned property and liabilities is what would happen with James P. Price, Traverse Harvest facility, if the 10-year research period determines that lake-run salmonids are desired species in the upstream waterway, which is a possibility. The James P. Price is commonly known as the Boardman Fishweer on Hall Street. That is a facility that is owned by Traverse City Light and Power, on the same parcel as the adjacent substation, though it is operated by the DNR, and currently goes through a third-party contractor for fisheries, that being Shore Pine Investments. I'm an employee seasonally, full disclosure, of Shore Pine. But if it's determined through the tenure process that Coho and Schnook, so lake-run salmonids, are desired to go upstream, then that fishweer will serve a redundant purpose, and as a city-owned building and city-owned infrastructure, it could be targeted for decommission. But it is not our decision to make to say whether Coho and Schnook, or indeed any species, is ultimately going to be passing upstream. That is a decision of the DNR and of the tribes in concert. We play no role. So we shouldn't be making decisions now based on what some other decision-making body could decide 10 years after, two years down the road.
Thank you, Mitch.
And with that, I think we should move forward.
Any other comments from any commissioners? Jackie?
Just to say, I, I hear what you're saying, and, you know, if we were to align this MOA with our own, our own 10-years on the board, should we sign a two-year agreement? Should we sign a five-year agreement? Should we, you know, shorten our focus to a shorter time period, when there are more knowns and fewer unknowns?
I'm going to just say a couple things here. I understand that, again, all of us have served for different times, and we'll be serving for different times. I'm pretty sure that discussions of Fish Pass encompass Tim Warner's entire time on this commission, my entire time on this commission. We have partners like the Grand Traverse Band of Chipwato Indians, we have the DNR, and so I think, I understand, I totally understand where Commissioner Anderson is coming from, but I, I don't, I want to just caution, not caution, but remind everyone, this isn't people sitting around kind of just guessing. These are professionals, yes, this is a new version of something, but it's not totally unheard of, of how the cost of landscaping, things like that, there's good, we can make good estimates of that, but we, as a body, have to prepare to make, and this is any elected official body, decisions that are affecting tomorrow, 10 years from now, 20 years from now, and 50 years from now. We don't build streets for two years, we don't pick up sideways projects. When I, right up, shortly after I was elected, and Commissioner Warner was on that, that board, we bonded to be able to do a lot of sidewalk repair at once, because we were doing $300,000 a year, here, there, and everywhere, and being very ineffective. And so now, our choice is a bold visionary choice, but the decisions we make are for a longer scope as well as shorter, and this is a project that's been discussed for eight years. It's gone through a lot of discussions. It's also been approved in various ways by six different commissions over those, the eight years that I can recall. Well, nine now, over 10 years. And so this is something that I guess, I would say I have no problem voting for, because of the parties involved, the discussion that's gone into it. It's very true, we can't know exactly every number, but I also don't think that these are groups that are playing by guess and by God up here about what maybe we're going to be obligated for, for the next 10 years, and as we've heard, there's money there for what might need to happen at the end if it's decommissioned, that there's a lot of other thoughts that are going into this. We do this with Cherry Festival, you know, we've got them for years, and we, we check in every couple of years, and then they adjust budgets, so I'm sure that we'll get updates. We, we haven't gone more than a, probably six or eight months in my time without getting updates on Fish Pass, in one way, shape, or form, and I don't think that will ever change. So I just wanted to add that as, as my two cents here. Go ahead, Jackie.
I, I hoped it was clear that my suggestion to make this a two-year agreement was a facetious one.
Oh, it was not, but I appreciate that, sorry. I'm very brain dead today, though, so that's not, that's not a comment on your humor, Jackie, sorry.
However, I, I do think that there, there are good ways, and there are better ways to manage uncertainty in decision-making, and I, I, I feel as though this is an important enough agreement, that it, it behooves us to look into it carefully and to understand it completely. That's, that's why I would suggest a study session, to give it the, the time and the focus that it deserves.
Thank you. Commissioner Stanley?
So I understand that the Grand Traverse Band has already signed on to this, the other partners involved, is, so a couple of questions. Is the City of Traverse City currently the only party to this agreement that has not signed on?
No, they're the second one on, on the list.
Okay. And then if the City of Traverse City found something that it felt very, felt strongly enough needed to be modified, what would the process be for doing that?
The process would be, I believe it is kind of outlined in the dispute resolution section, and essentially would have to go back to all the signatories.
And is that something that could happen, so, and, so given that there's at least one other signatory who hasn't signed yet, could they request changes even after the City of Traverse City signs on?
They could. The intent was, we shared this with all the, all the partners that are involved in the project, their legal counsel, and have had it as thorough- project, their legal counsel, and have had it as thoroughly reviewed as possible up to this point.
So so far, it's been a unanimous process that this is a reasonable agreement for these entities to be signing on to.
Tim?
Just a quick comment. I'll be supporting this, and for many of the same reasons that the mayor already stated. But my take on it is that the dollar amount is quite low compared to everything else we do in the city on an annual basis. And the risk that's, I think, being discussed, to me, the risk is all on the other parties. Traverse City is taking on lawn mowing, trash removal, and maintenance of the new dam, but the new dam is not new technology. The new dam is old technology, or well-established technology, is a better word for it. So those estimates are quite good estimates. So I don't, I don't see that we're taking on risk. Yeah, what was, I think, shared in an email as far as an estimate of what the annual cost might be, it could be low, but even if it doubles to, you know, $54,000 or something, that's still, compared to everything else we do, again, in the city, to me, quite acceptable. So I'll be supporting it.
Thank you. Any else?
I'm gonna go ahead and open this up for public comment then. Do we have any public comment on this item? All right. I don't see any takers, so I'll bring it back. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Stanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Treadwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Warner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
No.
And Mayor Shamro?
Yes. Motion passes. Okay, and this now is our 13 new positions. These were, in concept, approved in the budget for the 2025, 2026, but in our discussions, we often find that the public sometimes will say, well, what's going on with EMS? Or have we hired a arborist? And it's because we've done it in a, you know, bigger, all-encompassing vote, and so we decided to have the city manager kind of lay out what she's looking at here and bring that forward to us.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. We, we discussed this throughout the budget process, and you did approve these positions within the budget. It is required that they be formally approved so they can be added to the role. I did want to say, of the 13, six are for EMS transport, which the voters approved through the new millage in November of 2023. We're looking forward to continuing the good work to get that up and running, and we're making really excellent progress. I want to thank the entire team who's come together to make good end roads there with purchasing apparatus and equipment. And we have a new EMS manager who's already doing really great work for the team. An additional, two of those 13 are part-time to full-time positions. Some of those positions are also being paid for out of enterprise funds, not just the general fund. So like the six, for instance, for the fire department will be paid for that fire millage. I did offer to meet with Commissioners during the budget season to answer questions about these positions. I didn't receive any after the budget was approved, so at this time, we are asking for that support and approval tonight.
Does anybody have any questions about these positions or want to make a motion? Be some squirreling, so.
I'll make the motion that the city commission authorizes the creation of the following full-time positions as outlined in the June 6, 2025 communication from the Human Resources Director, A. One System Administrator, B. One Forestry Parks Maintenance Worker, C. One Water Treatment Plant Operator, D. One Stormwater Equipment Operator, E. One Detective Sergeant, F. One Project Coordinator, G. One Marina Dock Master, and H. Six Firefighters for EMS Transport.
The board.
Thank you, Commissioner Stanley and Commissioner Treadwell. Any further comments? Go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, I would, I won't be supporting this motion. I would support a motion that was just for the six firefighters and the water treatment plant position, because as was stated, there's a direct funding for the firefighter EMS positions, and Eagle from the state has a requirement so that we will need to make that water treatment plant position full-time. The other positions, I feel, you know, six additional positions, it would be best if we as a body waited till the July discussion about how the strategic plan and the budget align or don't align, to help us figure out what the priorities are, and then work with the city manager to, like, determine with those priorities how to move forward, and if these six positions are the best allocation of resources. And just by way of example, for the position that is involved with stormwater, I got to be part of the SAW grant effort, and I think that wrapped up maybe in 2018, and we were told by the outside consultants that worked on that, that we as a city need to be spending $2 million a year, not just to catch up, but in perpetuity, to address our deteriorating stormwater system. And at that time, we were spending half a million dollars a year, and I don't know that that's really escalated much. So with that in mind, like, that would be a discussion is, okay, we have this stormwater system that we're responsible for, we're falling further and further behind every year. Maybe it makes sense to hire somebody, but maybe it makes sense to use those dollars in a different way to address stormwater, and that's a discussion we haven't had. So that's, that's where, to me, it's a bit premature. I could support all these positions, but I would like each of them to have a real discussion about where our priorities are, and if these hirings, which are not just a one-time thing, but an expense every year, ongoing. So that's where I'm at. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments from Commissioners? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, bring it back. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Stanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Treadwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Warner?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
And Mayor Shamro?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, and then moving on to one that I'm excited about, and I'll hand over to Jackie, the proposed charter amendment for the ethics ordinance. This has been a lot of good work of committee-led by Jackie Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that comment. This process began in February when we, as a body, agreed to form an ad hoc to explore what could be contained and how we might proceed with development of an ethics policy for everyone affiliated with the city, be they employees, appointed officials, even volunteers. And our, our North Star in the process has been transparency and fairness, that we, we are doing this to promote public trust, but also to earn public trust. And I, I think that we have really made great progress. Mayor Shamro, Commissioner Treadwell have contributed, as has our city attorney, and we're, we're closing in on actually having content for an ordinance. But in order to adopt the ordinance, we need to have a city charter that says we may do so. And so that's what this proposal is, that we have a proposal that an ordinance shall be added to the, I'm sorry, the charter shall be amended to permit a city ordinance on the topic of ethics. And the proposed language for that ballot initiative is, is as you see it in our packet. And I hope that everyone here is as excited as we are on what this may mean in terms of transparency and trust, and, well, I'll leave it at that. I'm babbling. But do you have anything to add?
I would just say, the transparency and trust is a good point. I think also defined expectations. We talked about how the, you know, going into this, we all kind of know that if there's a clear financial benefit or something, that's, that makes it very easy black and white, whether we should or shouldn't recuse ourselves, or, you know, where the conflict could be. But there's other considerations, and some are, and I made a case in point, I think it's still the case, that Light &amp; Power meetings start with, does anybody need to recuse themselves? And that was because at one point, there was an attorney who handled some cases that sometimes dealt with Light &amp; Power at the top, or in, on the board, so we just put it at the top. And so kind of, that kind of procedure of what, what qualifies as being transparent, because what it is to one person might not be to the other, and so we have some much clearer guidelines for everybody to follow, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Mitch, anything? Good, oh, great. So does anybody have any questions or make a motion? Go ahead Heather.
I move that the resolution to amend Section 31 of the city charter of Traverse City, which would place a ballot proposal on the November 4, 2025 election regarding the requirement of an ethic.
Ethics, sorry.
Ethics. Ordinance be adopted.
Good support. Thank you, Commissioner Shaw and Commissioner Treadwell. Any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, any public comment on this item?
Merrick Roman, 517 Third Street, city resident. Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. My name is Merrick Roman. I'm speaking about the proposed charter amendment for the ethics ordinance. This resolution talks about transparency and fairness to build trust between government and the public, and that officials have a fiduciary duty to prioritize the city's interests above their own. I agree with these principles completely. However, days ago, I just filed a complaint that I saw Commissioner Treadwell's conduct directly interacting with planning and, and planning staff instead of going through the city manager as Section 37 requires. His behavior suggests he's comfortable with bypassing proper channels, which means that cannot be, this cannot be an isolated event. This conduct does not instill trust and undermines the very principle this amendment claims promote. I've received no substantive response whether this charter violation will be investigated. The charter goes, gives the city manager clear authority and responsibility to investigate municipal affairs under Section 41. This makes me question, what does it take for a citizen to be heard, to be heard and for this investigation to go through? Our charter already requires ethical conduct and makes violations a misdemeanor with removal from office. We don't need more rules, we need accountability. If you have it in the charter, he doesn't get to bypass it. I want to see this, I want to see an investigation done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I'd like to make a comment. I know we don't typically respond to public comment, but just because of what was said, I want to state that the charter does clearly provide that Commissioners have the ability to make inquiries of staff, so it shouldn't be presumed that that's a violation of that option for Commissioners.
Yes, and all I was just gonna say is, this is the, as Commissioner Anderson outlined, this is for the resolution so that we are allowed to have an ethics ordinance. We are meeting next Tuesday, for example. There is a much meatier ordinance coming out that goes through a lot more of the details. So this is the kind of formality that allows us to create the ordinance that will be created, and then allows us to implement it as well. So, go ahead Jackie.
Just to add that enforcement will be addressed in the ordinance itself, and, and there will be clear channels and approaches to be able to enforce our objectives for ethical behavior.
Mm-hmm. Any other comments from Commissioners? Seeing none, I'll bring it for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, so that will be on your ballot in 2025 for city residents. And lastly, we have a.
Oh, sorry.
It always goes off when I'm talking. Last, we have a motion to go into closed session, so can we get a, does anybody have a motion for that?
I so move.
I can read the motion.
I can, I can read it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay. I, I made it sound like it was very official. The city commission entered into closed session immediately following the public comment portion of the agenda to consider attorney-client communication in connection with an agreement as authorized by MCL 15.268 subsection H.
Second.
No, that you made that, so I'll take a second on that.
I'll second it.
Okay. No, you're fine.
I'm out of words.
It's a, no, it's a tricky thing where I can read it, but usually the chair doesn't make the motion. So that's you making the motion, and Commissioner Treadwell seconding it. Okay, any public comment on this item? It'll be after, we'll vote on this, but we'll have general public comment, and then we'd go into closed session. So you don't have to wait through the closed session. All right, so any public comment on this item? Just to clear. Okay, I'm bringing it back. All in favor. A roll call, thank you. Yep.
Commissioner Treadwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Warner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Stanley?
Yes.
And Mayor Shamro?
Yes. Okay, motion passes, so we will go into closed session after the public comment, and we don't anticipate any action, is my understanding. So with that, I will go on to reports and announcements. Does anybody have any reports they want to make?
I, I would like to mention that tomorrow is a special planning commission meeting, and that we will be addressing not only rezoning for the 300 and 400 blocks of Union Street, but also reviewing a planned unit development near the intersection of Woodmere and Carver Streets. So if anyone has comments that they would like to make about those, tomorrow night is the night, 6:00 PM in these chambers.
Thank you. Any others? All right, seeing none, I will now open this up for general public comments, under, anything under the sun.
Good evening, Richard Robbins, representing the Grand Traverse Safe Streets Alliance. I'm very disappointed in the approach taken to number nine that was pulled from this agenda. The commission did not, did not, there was no motion for a, in, in order to have the, the, the item addressed or seconded, so that there could be general, there could be public comment. And the Grand Traverse Safe Streets Alliance has now developed a cadre of some very good subject matter expertise, both state and nationally, on these types of topics, that could address the fear, uncertainty, and doubt that were presented. And so the other issue is that by not bringing this up and having a vote, it basically allows you to not disclose what your position is. And I just don't think that's right from a citizen's standpoint, about being able to be able to understand where the commission stands. So that's my personal and the position of the alliance. The second issue I'd like to address is I'm getting, we are getting quite a few inquiries onto our website as we are collecting data and collecting information and interest from literally hundreds of households in this five-county region about what is Traverse City's addressing of this painting issue? How many times has I, have I brought this up, the alliance brought this up? And we would like to request that the commission, through the communications departments, maybe through the Bay Brief, this Friday, a very clear understanding of what is going on with painting and what's the approach to address it? The alliance's position is, to have a, a painting that is lasting and that is meaningful, we need to move to a two-times-a-year application, May and, and October, so that we have it year-round with the current. But we're open for other ideas. We just want lines and, and pedestrian crosswalks that are marked. It's a pretty simple request. Been made now a half a dozen times, guys. So I'd like to have you guys take this on, because it's not appropriate for me to have to address this on the alliance website. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back. So we will recess for now, go to closed session, we will come back. We're not anticipating any action when we come back, but we will formally close the meeting at that time. but we will formally close the meeting at that time.
Okay. It's the fastest out, the whole groups come just to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, we're back at, from our recess and now I will officially adjourn our meeting. Thank you all, have a great night.
Good night.
I don't know if I gave him enough time to start the panel.